Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, it is well past 7:00 PM on the 9th of September. And so we shall begin the 2019 Fall Town Meeting. We are going to open with the flag salute. Please rise, put your hand over your heart, and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Congregant Bob Visnick from Temple Ahavaz Achim in Gloucester is now going to give the invocation. Our God and God of our ancestors, we ask your blessings for our country, the Commonwealth, and this town, for our governments, our leaders and advisors, and for all who exercise just and rightful authority. Teach them and all of us insights of your sacred texts that our leaders and voters may administer all affairs of government fairly, that peace and prosperity, happiness, justice, and freedom may forever abide in our midst. Our Creator bless all the inhabitants of our country and of our small town with your Spirit. May citizens of all beliefs forge a common bond in true harmony and banish all hatred, bigotry, and to safeguard the ideals and free institutions which are the pride and glory of all Americans. May Rockport continue to be a beacon of good, fair, and effective government throughout this land. And let us say, Amen. All right, the Chair will entertain a motion to omit the reading of the articles in the warrant. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Thank you. Clerk will please read the officer's return on the warrant.
I, Philip D. Wesley III, Constable of the Town of Rockport, have on this date, August 14th, 2019, posted the annual town meeting warrant for the annual town meeting to be held on Monday, September 9th, 2019, at the Rockport High School in the two post offices, the Town Bulletin Board, and seventeen other public places throughout the town, including three in Precinct 1, three in Precinct 2, and three in Precinct 3. Signed Philip D. Wesley III. Received August 14th, 2:15 PM. Linda A. Emerson, Assistant Town Clerk.
Thank you, Pat. Just a few procedural matters. We're not going to belabor this because we have a large agenda, a lot of stuff to do. And we're going to get through it tonight. If for some reason we can't, we will meet again here tomorrow night, but we will finish tonight. That is my bet. All right, we have Darren Klein of the firm KP Law, our town council, to my left. He's here to assist us with any legal matters. If you have any questions, he'll be glad to answer them. From time to time, he will speak. He will talk about some issue that has come up. You don't need to yell and scream. Let's hear from Legal. I'm going to give him a moment to contemplate because even though he's a wonderful lawyer, he still has to think about things. Our meeting will be conducted in accordance with the parliamentary procedure as described in Section 2 of our bylaws. And that information is in your voter's booklet. I'm not going to belabor all of that. We are always going to be dealing with a pending motion and not the warrant article itself. With respect to each article, Mitch Viera, our administrator, will read the motion. It will be seconded and then perhaps explained by a proponent or by Mitch as a proxy. If appropriate, we'll hear from either the Finance Committee or the Government Bylaw Committee or other committees as appropriate. Those committees will state the committee recommendations and its rationale. And then we will have debate. The principal proponents can speak for ten minutes. Each other speaker can speak for five minutes. But remember my mantra. There is an inverse relationship between the length of your speech and the effectiveness of it. And I may have to mention that on more than one occasion. To speak, get the attention of either me or Pat or Lindy. And we will be looking for people with their hands raised. And once recognized... Do we have any microphone people tonight? We have several microphone people. So stand up and either wait for a microphone or come on down and speak. Our remarks have to go through the Chair. And you must be civil. You cannot be... Make any personal negative comments. This is not the federal government here. This is the Town of Rockport. And we respect and love one another. And even though we might get annoyed if somebody has a contrary position, we do not think that they are, you know, stupid because of it. And so I don't brook any inappropriate behavior. We have just about the entire Rockport Police Force here this evening. And under Mass General Law, I have the authority to have you removed and detained for the remainder of the meeting. We are guests of the school department. And smoking is not permitted anywhere on school property except if you're the superintendent. There are a few things at the beginning of our booklet that are a little outdated. We don't have standing votes anymore. We have these wonderful clickers. And Mike Montgomery is going to give us a test question so you can make sure your clicker works and that you know how to use it. Remember, 1 or A is yes, and 2 or B is no. After each vote, Mike is going to scream out the number of votes in the affirmative and in the negative. And he'll also give us the percentage. Okay? You can't even see him.
When they vote, make sure they get a green light.
Yep. So, again, make sure that this does not read in Cyrillic or now, I guess, Chinese. And make sure you get a green light. And if not, come and see Pat or Lindy and they can replace the machine or go out back. And we have extra voting clickers. Okay? When you have a microphone, make sure that you state your name and your address. At least give us the address the first time you speak. Maybe not the thirty-first time. The bylaw says we'll give preference to people who have not spoken on any particular issue. When I sense you're ready to vote, I will state the question either by quoting or paraphrasing it. And that is the time for you to ask any questions if you don't understand what you're going to vote on because then we're going to have a vote. Over there are visitors. Matter of fact, I see a very important visitor back there. Ann-Margaret Ferrante, could you please stand and be recognized? Our state representative is here this evening. And we are wonderfully represented. So we would like to thank you for all the attention that you give our little part of the world. All right. Mike, let's give us a sample question. Practice vote. All right. The question is, "Are the Patriots going to repeat as Super Bowl champions this year?" A for yes and B for no. Ready? Begin. You'll have ten seconds here. All righty. And the percentage and the numbers?
Seventy-five percent in favor, twenty-five against.
Seventy-five percent, twenty-five?
Two hundred and fifty-five for, eighty-six against.
Two fifty-five to eighty-six. That means we have a lot of people here. Everybody satisfied with the operation of their clicker? It's green and not red? If your clicker is red and not green...
You need to go get a new one.
Go back and get a new clicker.
It should turn green once you start the vote. Okay? When you push the button, it should be green.
Once I say, "Ready, go," then it'll turn green. And you'll have ten seconds. Should we do another one? All right, we're going to do another practice question. This is unheard of. Another practice question. The question is... Let's clear the board. Okay. The question is, "Do you like having meetings on a warm summer night?" A for yes and B for no. Or 1 for yes and 2 for no. Ready? Go. Twenty-three percent yes and seventy-seven percent no. Great. We all comfortable with these? We're going to begin. So there are several articles that I've determined to be related. And so when the first one of these is called, we'll go through all of them. And it's A, B, and H, C, D, and E, K, and M, and F, G, and P. And there will not be any motions anticipated for I or L. L was just a trial balloon. O? O. No O. O. We ready? All right. All right, we have E. So we are going to hear C, Charlie, Delta, and Echo.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Vice Chair Aaron Battistelli moves at the town here and receive the report of the Community Preservation Committee. Board of Selectmen support this article.
Moved and seconded.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Battistelli, and I currently serve as the Vice Chairperson of the Rockport Community Preservation Committee. This evening, we are presenting six applications which the committee has reviewed and approved and which we now... Which we hope that you would consider for approval. I would like to introduce the members of the CPC committee and ask that those who are present, please stand. Chairperson Phil Crotty, Historical Committee Representative Jim Ugoney, Housing Authority Representative Bethany Brosden, Treasurer Michael Michaels, Former Planning Board Representative Ed Hand, and current Planning Board Member Hank Betts. Conservation Commission Representative Fran Osceolo, and Members Jim Gardner and Jonathan Hart. Thank you for your service to the town. Our committee accepts applications for funding by a specified date in late January or early February of each year. We typically receive six to ten applications. There is approximately...
Plenty of seats up front. Plenty of seats up front. No extra charge.
There is approximately $600,000 available to fund the projects each year. Funding comes from a 3% addition to your property tax bill plus a fluctuating match from the state. The 2020 application and more information on that funding round will be available on our town website in November. We encourage applications from town departments and committees and not-for-profit organizations. Town residents are also welcome to work with the town department and/or committee with a project idea. Our next meeting is October 15th. So everyone's welcome to come to that as we talk about next year's funding round. Our three most significant funding projects in recent years are the Millbrook Meadow redevelopment, the Congregational Church steeple reconstruction, and the redevelopment of Straitsmith Island, as you can see on the slides. Under the state statute, the Community Preservation Committee can entertain applications from each of four allowable areas: open space, recreation, historic preservation, and affordable housing. This year, each subject area is represented. And the total we recommend to you for funding is $415,300. Here are the projects. Millbrook Meadow Bench, $15,000. Applicant, Joe Parisi. I'm sorry. Do you have slides on both of them? No, or any of these? Oh, that's the only slide you have? I'm sorry. Oh, all right. So I'll list the projects. We don't have slides for these. Millbrook Meadow Bench, $15,000. Applicant is Joe Parisi, DPW. Library Infrastructure Study, $27,400. Applicant is Cindy Grove, Director of the Rockport Public Library. The Sandy Bay Historical Roof and Related Work, $49,900. And the applicant is Bob Burbank and the Sandy Bay Historic Society. Affordable Housing Assessment, $23,000. Applicant is Town Administrator Mitch Viera. Conservation Commission Trust Fund, $100,000. And the applicant is David McKinnon, the Chairperson of the Conservation Commission. And the last is Harbor Light Communities Housing, $200,000. And the applicant is Harbor Light. And Kristin Carlson is here from Harbor Light. After a number of public meetings where these projects were vetted, the CPC recommends approval of each of these six projects. Thank you for your consideration tonight.
Thank you, Aaron. You and your committee have done an inordinate amount of work. And so we appreciate it. And now, all those in favor of receiving the report which you have just received, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. That motion carries and it's unanimous. We move on to the first substantive motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Vice Chair Aaron Battistelli moves at $58,000 be transferred from the FY '20 estimated annual revenues of the Community Preservation Fund to the Community Preservation Fund Community Housing Reserve Account. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee support this motion.
Moved and Lindah seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries, it was unanimous. We move on to the second motion. It will be done by 8:30.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Vice Chair Aaron Battistelli moves at $58,000 be transferred from FY '20 estimated annual revenues of the Community Preservation Fund to the Community Preservation Fund Open Space Recreation Reserve Account. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee support this motion.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Unanimous. Third.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Vice Chair Aaron Battistelli moves at $58,000 be transferred from FY '20 estimated annual revenues of the Community Preservation Fund to the Community Preservation Fund Historic Preservation Reserve Account. Finance Committee and Selectmen support this article.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? You've heard the motion. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We now move on to Article E.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Vice Chair Aaron Battistelli moves that $15,000 be appropriated and transferred from the Community Preservation Open Space and Recreation Reserve Account and expended under the direction of the Director of Public Works and DPW Commissioners working with the Community Preservation Committee and the Millbrook Meadow Association for the creation, construction, and installation of a long granite bench in Millbrook Meadow Park. Board of Selectmen support this article with the recommendation to use Rockport granite. Finance Committee does not support this motion.
And before we have any discussion, I have been told that Rockport granite is the granite that is going to be used. There was a question as to that. So, in case you were wondering. All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Toby! I didn't know you came to these things.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. The proposed bench is constructed to look like the Bowlards. Those are the posts atop the mill dam. The posts are constructed of large lumps of field stone, maybe double a man's fist or the size of a soccer ball. They look dirty, although they're not. And on top are squares of, not polished, but smoothed granite. We're now told, although in the application it didn't say so, that the top of the posts would be Rockport granite. So the bench, fifteen... Excuse me, twenty feet long in an arc would be constructed to look like those posts. We can do much better and not pay $15,000. The Town of Rockport has a small hoard of large, rough granite blocks up by the Carlson Quarry Pump House. And they could be dragged down and placed in an arc and not cost us anything. The DPW could do it in-house. A stone bench, whether it's what is proposed here or what I am suggesting, is not comfortable. And in winter, it's intolerable. You'd as soon sit on a block of ice. We could also have park benches of the kind the town puts at the town beaches. The Millbrook Meadow Conservancy got a grant from the Institution for Savings... Thank you to the Institution for Savings for six park benches of the town... The kind the town places at the beaches. So it's not up to the Millbrook Meadow Conservancy where they go. It's up to the Town of Rockport. That is, the Selectmen. And four of those benches could be arranged there in place of the stone monstrosity here proposed. And we could have something that would actually be comfortable to sit upon, again, at no expense to the town. And I refer you to page seven in the booklet where it says that you're not advised... And this is the Finance Committee, "to be voting for things that we could get for nothing out of private charities or other sources." So I think we might spare ourselves the $15,000 and have either a very handsome granite bench of Rockport granite solid. Or if you would rather, you should express your opinion to the Board of Selectmen, "we could have park benches, wooden or simulated wooden, with backs to them and comfortable."
I knew this discussion would get rocky.
Sam Colburn, 7th Mill Lane, Chairman of the Millbrook Meadow Committee and the Conservancy. Thank you, Toby, for redesigning our park. Here we are. We've just opened the park on the 17th of August. You, the townspeople, have voted in the last seven years. You voted a total of $1.2 million to do the work. You've also donated... You and others have donated $560,000 of your own private money to give us a beautiful park. And we hope you like it. But I'll tell you one thing. It was not done by Saturday afternoon carpentry by Toby. You cannot get a park... You cannot get a park... He mentions the benches. Institute for Savings, Cape Anne Savings Bank, and several other donors gave us money for park benches. Two of them have already been placed. The other four will be placed as soon as DPW can get to it. Two of them will be on the banks of the pond. And the other two will be on the pathway coming into the meadow. The whole idea of the 20-foot semi-circular bench was you could sit there and you could look at the ocean in one direction. Or you could wheel around and look at the dam in the other direction. And it is made to emulate the construction of the... As Toby described, emulate the construction of the dam behind it. It'll have granite capstones, Rockport granite, and the round stones that will be on the sides of it. The whole idea is for families. You could spread out your picnic there. If you think it's too hard, you bring a blanket. That's the idea of it. And it's wide enough for a whole, a large family to come and sit down and have a picnic there or anything they want to do. There will be other benches, though. There is already a bench near the playground. And there's already a bench up by the whale. Speaking of the whale, the whale is also Rockport granite. Six thousand pounds of granite. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, other discussion. Mr. Sepulveda, please stand up. We'll get you a microphone. Right behind you.
Thank you. Zee Sepulveda, 92 Granite Street. I want to comment on those benches as Toby suggested. I was down at Cake Court two weeks ago and found a garden supply center that was having its end-of-the-year sales where there's six-foot-long teak benches, normally $2,000, were marked down for the end-of-the-year sale for $1,000 each. Also, I've been online and I've looked at teak benches that you could just normally buy online. They run about $1,500 for a six-foot-long bench. So it's conceivable that for like the $15,000 that is going to get you a 20-foot-long uncomfortable granite bench, you could get 60 feet of a teak bench with or without a back so that you could shift your vantage points. And teak on the advertised websites is guaranteed to last about 80 years in an outside environment. So I think that before you consider buying chairs like our gymnasium has for Springtown Meeting or compare them to the types of chairs you're sitting in now, I think that we should go along with the Finance Committee's recommendation to think more a little along comfort. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, we're going to... Oh, yes. Get you a clicker.
Herman Lydia Sixpaver, H. Lane. I see the stone bench as an indication or remembrance of our history, the history of Rockwood and the granite industry. I don't see teak as being a part of that. I don't see any of the combination of benches as being a part of it. I think that this large area that has been created or reconstructed is a memorial park. I think you ought to consider all the men who worked in this town in that every industry, the granite industry. $15,000 is really a pittance compared to the history of the town. So I would offer that you support that investment.
Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Carol Cook, 171 Thatcher Road. Recently, I took my nieces to the park and there weren't any benches. And I don't know whether somebody put one in this week, but I was there, I think, two weeks ago. But as, you know, the park is for families and people to stop and have lunch or something. I don't think I want to sit on a cement bench with, you know, five other people. I think it's wonderful to have benches. The park looks beautiful. Have them throughout the park so that different people can sit in different places. I mean, that's what a park is supposed to be for, our families, our friends. I mean, that's what a park is supposed to be for, our families, our friends. So, anyway, I don't think a big cement bench is a good idea.
You've heard the motion. You've heard the motion. All those in favor, press A or 1. Oppose, press 2 or B. We are going to start. Somebody not understand the question? Yes? No, we seem to have enough, I was told a moment ago. We good? I think we're good. We have one person without a clicker? All right. All those in favor, raise your hand. In favor of this motion to allocate $15,000 to, from the Community Preservation Open Space Recreation Reserve Account for the creation, construction, and installation of a long granite bench. Any questions about what the question means? Question about what that means? Okay. We're done talking about it, but the question is only going to be what it means. We have a long agenda, we're going to get through it. So, if you don't understand what this means, I'll be glad to hear from you, otherwise we're going to vote. All those in favor of that purchase, please raise your hand. Thank you. Oppose, the same sign. Ooh, too close to count. We're doing it this way because I believe we're short on clickers. Does anybody not have a clicker? That's a voter. Ed, you're good? Oh, only three people. All right, we'll use our wonderful clickers. All those in favor, press 1, or you three people know what to do. And oppose, the same sign, starting now. Are you gonna?
Yeah, they're gonna bring their votes up.
Okay. And the motion fails by more than three votes, I'm going to say. What are the raw numbers, Mike? 137, 4 and 235 against. Anybody with a card over here want to bring it up? We won't, we won't say what it is, but it's not going to change the result, we're going to move on. All right. We're now moving on to the second motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Vice Chair Aaron Battistelli moves that $27,400 be appropriated and transferred from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Reserve Account and expended under the oversight of the Director of Public Works and DPW Commissioners, working with the Community Preservation Committee for engineering services to assess drainage, moisture, and humidity concerns in the historic Rockport Public Library. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee support this motion.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, you've heard the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. That motion carries, and it is unanimous. All ready.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Vice Chair Aaron Battistelli moves that $49,900 be appropriated and transferred from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Reserve Account as a grant to the Sandy Bay Historical Society, a nonprofit corporation duly organized under the laws of Massachusetts, for the restoration, rehabilitation, and historic preservation of the roof, structure, and chimney of the Sandy Bay Historical Society Museum Building, also known as the Seawall Scripture House, at 40 King Street, Rockport, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen, following consultation with the Community Preservation Committee, to enter into a grant agreement setting forth the terms of such grant, and as may be necessary to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept a preservation restriction on said house in connection therewith. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee support this article.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, you've heard the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries, and it was unanimous. We move on to the fourth motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Vice Chair Aaron Battistelli moves that $23,000 be appropriated and transferred from the Community Preservation Community Housing Reserve Account and expended under the oversight of the Board of Selectmen, working with the Community Preservation Committee to conduct a professional affordable housing needs assessment, including necessary the hiring of any appropriate consultants. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee support this article.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Toby.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. I wrote a letter in support of the application, and we certainly do need the housing assessment. There's more to it than that, and some of the more to it is, you know, questionable. Just reading from the application, starting in the middle, "The assessment will provide direction for developing strategies and an action plan for addressing the identified needs." So, we've jumped from actually assessing the needs to providing an action plan. We've jumped from step one, that's the assessment, to an assumption that we're going to produce one sort of housing or another. And I think that is, you know, biting off too much at once, it's unfortunate. The selectmen have the hope that they'll get grant money to pay for the affordable housing. We are one of 351 cities and towns, numbers of which are much more needy than we are, so I think their hopes are delusional. We are going to be asked to pay for this, and we need to be consulted as to what we want to fund in the way of affordable housing, what sort of a housing. And if you go on, if you read the application, again, skipping down, "Guide the town in its initial and most important steps, remedying the issue of affordable and workforce housing." And workforce housing appears several places in the project. Why workforce housing? It's supposed to be affordable housing. If workforce housing were the same thing, why would we give it a different name? So, something is afoot here that should not be. Undoubtedly, we need the housing assessment, and I'm going to vote for it. I suggest you do too, if you care about affordable housing. But if you care about affordable housing, you want to watch very closely what will happen next.
Jim.
Jim Johnson, 63 Broadway. I'm not speaking far against this motion, I'm just curious as to how does affordable housing qualify under the Community Preservation Act? I don't know enough about the Community Preservation Act, if there's someone that could provide an answer on that.
Anyone from the board?
Yes, one of the things under CPC is affordable housing. It's one of the top priorities. Affordable housing, historic preservation, open space, and recreation are the categories. So, affordable housing, this fits right into it, it would give us a sense of what we need out there to start affordable housing in town.
Any further questions or comments? You've heard the motion. Yes. Please wait for a microphone, we'll get one right to you. No, you do need one, right over there, right to your left.
Aaron Medlock, 58 South Street. I just didn't, I didn't think that answer was very good. Is it statutory? That's, I think, and that's what I wanted to clarify. Okay, thank you.
All right, all those in favor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no.
No.
All right, motion carries. We move on to the fifth motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Vice Chair Aaron Battistelli moves that $100,000 be appropriated and transferred from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Account to the Conservation Trust Fund to be administered by the Rockport Conservation Commission, to be used for purposes consistent with the Community Preservation Act. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee support this motion.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, you've heard the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. We move on to the sixth and final motion, but before we do, let's draw another article. J. Okay, J, which will be followed by A, B, and H. How about that? All right, sixth motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Vice Chair Aaron Battistelli moves that $200,000 be appropriated and transferred from the Community Preservation Undesignated Account as a grant to Harbor Light Community Partners, a nonprofit corporation duly organized under the laws of Massachusetts, for the creation, construction, and establishment of affordable community housing at 5 Granite Street, Rockport, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen, following consultation with the Community Preservation Committee, to enter into a grant agreement setting forth the terms of such grant, and as may be necessary, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept an affordable housing restriction in such housing in connection therewith. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee support the motion.
Moved and seconded. I believe we have somebody here from Harbor Light? Good evening. Please tell us what this is all about.
Hi, I'm Kristin Carlson from Harbor Light Community Partners. We're a nonprofit in Beverly that builds and manages affordable housing around the North Shore for families, seniors, and individuals. Our request is for money for a project at 5 Granite Street, which will be called Granite Street Crossing. It's 23 units, 17 for seniors, and 6 for families, all income restricted. We have secured funding, other funding for the project. We received a grant from the Federal Home Loan Bank of Boston this year for half a million dollars, and we continue to apply for state funds, which are very competitive and typically take a few years to secure. So, we've been through one funding round and are going back in this year. Seeing such robust participation and support from the town is really wonderful, and it also helps make our application to the state that much more competitive. The state loves to see that local communities have, are putting some financing in and really have skin in the game. So, thank you for considering it, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, yes, ma'am, we'll get you, we'll get you a microphone. Pass it down, just like it's popcorn at a ballgame.
What guarantee is there?
Just please state your name for our records.
Oh, I'm sorry, Terry Rizzolo for Summit. What guarantee is there that any of this housing will go to current Rockport residents? And secondly, how much money has the town already contributed to this project?
Sure, yes, so, we are allowed to request local preference from the state. The state ultimately has jurisdiction whether they allow that or not. And we can request and will request up to 70% local preference, which is for folks who live and work in Rockport. The second part of your question was how much has been committed. The CPC in the past two years has committed $270,000, and this request will be our final request.
All right, no, we have to hear from other people first. So, yes, in the back, we'll get you a microphone.
Just from the standpoint of?
Please, please state your name for our records and your address.
Randall Seawind, 103 Marmion Way. The buildings that you anticipate putting up, are they going to be architecturally consistent with the town itself?
Yes, I would say so. They're, they have pitched roofs, they're no more than two stories tall, they're actually broken into three separate smaller buildings. We wanted to keep the massing down. As part of the review and permitting process, we went through a process with the ZBA that included design review.
All right, let's see, Mr. Lilia. We'll get you a microphone right away. If you stand up, we'll get you a microphone.
Herman Lilia, speaking in part for the planning board. And that is that we are asked from time to time by various individuals in town, when will the project begin? Because everyone is aware that CPC has given money beforehand. Is this now a completion of your funding, or are you waiting for how much, and what is the future date of anticipation of that and the beginning of the project?
Sure, so, what's that?
I normally don't have conversations, but since you're the subject matter expert, please answer.
Okay, please feel free. So, the total project cost is about nine and a half million dollars. The vast majority of that is going to come from a combination of state funding, tax credits, which the state awards, which is a federal program, and sort of standard mortgage debt. So, this is obviously just, it's a lot of money, but it's just a small portion of what it's going to take to make the project happen. As I said, we are applying to the state, the state is supportive of the project, but it just, it takes time because there's so much competition for the resources that it takes to build this housing. So, if all goes well, we're going to put in an application, our second application to the state is going to go in this December. We'll probably find out next year if we receive funding, then it'll be about six months until we're ready to close and start construction. So, that would put us at late 2020. And just to clarify, the funding has been awarded, but we have not, we have not drawn anything, and we will not draw anything until construction starts.
Yeah, stand up, we'll get you a microphone. Or you can come up front, either way. Let's give a big round of applause, though, to our microphone runners, because they're really running. So, we thank them.
Margaret Sullivan, 7 God Street. I have a question for you, as a nonprofit, could you tell us the salaries of your three highest-paid employees?
I can tell you that I actually don't know what the salaries are, but we have public 990 files that you're welcome to look up.
All right. Toby.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. I'm poor and cheap, but I contribute annually to Harbor Light. I'm all in favor of the project. Cavil and Carp, a sour remark. It was a pity that they started by clobbering the holly tree out front, which was a thing of beauty, and then the next thing are piles of what is not clean fill. I think that's an insult to the town, and I think the piles should be removed before we give them the money. Thank you.
All right. Oh, way in the back. We have people way in the back. We'll get you a microphone. Please stand up if you would like to speak, because the microphone people need to find you. Here we go. We've got a couple in the back also. Go ahead.
Jan Rainier at 74 Main Street. Since the majority of these units would be allotted to senior citizens, is there an income requirement?
Yes, all the units will be income restricted at different income levels, both for the seniors and for the families.
The implication?
Just one question, we have to go on to the, make sure we hear from everybody. Is a gentleman up there, stand up, please, we'll get you a microphone.
Alex Aparo, 8 Brooks Road. Are the units in perpetuity for rental, or will the tenants have an ability to buy? What's the structure of how they'll come to rent or live or own the units?
Sure, these will be rental units.
In perpetuity?
Yes, yes, under the, under the funding programs, that's what's, that's what's allowed.
All right, one other person right up there in the front row of the... One other person right up there in the front row of the bleachers.
I have a two-part question. Paul Seavy, 11 Marmion Way. What qualifies as a Rockport resident? If somebody moves in six months ago, are they now a Rockport resident, and can they move in? Also, once that person dies, is it still held open for Rockport residents, or can it just go to anybody?
Sure, so I believe that what's required to qualify as a Rockport resident is having a legal address in Rockport, so for whatever duration that is. Once someone moves out of the units, we will have a wait list, and that will be first come, first served. We are only allowed by statute to do local preference for the first initial lottery. So people will apply, and the initial lease-up will be local preference. I can tell you just anecdotally, our projects, we have a large senior project in Beverly that actually had no local preference associated with it, and just as it's turned out, it's about 50% Beverly residents just sort of naturally occurring.
Gentleman in the back with a, looks to me like a purple shirt.
Hey, Tony Fortunato, 8 Summit Avenue. So I was just curious, you mentioned that the split was a majority senior housing, and then there were some family units, and I was wondering how that was determined, and if that was subject to change, given that we just voted on, you know, doing a survey to find out what the actual community needs were for affordable housing.
Sure, so for this project, that makeup is sort of baked in, both in terms of what we've received our zoning for, and also what the other funding sources, including the Federal Home Loan Bank, have committed to. It was also, it was in response to needs in the town. We conducted a market study that showed the need for both family and senior housing. We have senior housing here in town, up at Pigeon Cove Ledges and at the high school, the old high school, that have extensive waiting lists, so we know there's a need really for both. So it's 17 senior units and then 6 family units.
All right. Yes, sir, also in the back of the row right there. I don't know what color your shirt is.
I call it blue. Jerry Gladstone, 12 Straitsmith Way. Since you're talking as if obtaining the funding is conditional and highly competitive, do you have a drop dead date at which point, if you haven't received state funding, the project ends and goes away? And if that happens, do you return the funds to the town?
Sure, I can tell you that, I can tell you that we own the land, and we see this definitely as a marathon. They just take a long time, so we're going to hang in there. And also, just to assure you that we don't take any money from the CPC until construction is substantially complete.
Sarah Wilkinson from the Board of Selectmen. For those who may not know, I think it's helpful to point out again that Harborlight has been an amazing partner to the town over the past, I want to say 10 years, in partnering. Harborlight's managed Pigeon Cove Ledges apartments, as well as the Rockport High School apartments, and they've been heavily, heavily supported by CPC in the past. And part of the reason that the Board of Selectmen is supporting this is because they have such a great track record in town, and we look forward to continuing to work with them.
All right, John, we'll get you, stand up, we'll get your microphone.
Jonathan Ring, 9 Pools Lane. If you do not receive the $200,000 in CPC funding, are you still able to move forward with the project, or what are your alternative funding sources?
Yeah, it, you know, I'll say we're creative and we'll find a way to get it done, but the funding really helps us preserve all of the elements that we've included in the project, which includes extensive landscaping and fencing and things like that to help the project blend into the neighborhood. So we, it's important funding, but I would say even without it, we'll find a way, but it's important.
While we're waiting, do you have any granite benches on the facility?
Not yet.
Lori McKenna, 31 High Street. So it sounds like the town has committed 200 and something thousand already from the CPC. We're asked to commit another 200,000, so we can have 30, what was it, 23 units of housing? What are we arguing about? This is a bargain.
All right, looks like we're ready to go. You have heard the question. We're still not going to use our clickers, because we're trying to determine a fair and equitable procedure. So we'll be okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries. Wait a minute. We move on to A, followed by B, followed by H.
No, we're going to J.
J first, J.
Mr. Moderator, Board of Selectmen Chair Paul Murphy moves to amend the Town of Rockport Code of Bylaws, Chapter 7, Finances and Fiscal Procedures, Section 10, Establishment of Revolving Funds, and approve Article J as printed in the warrant as set forth on page 40 of the Fall Town Meeting Voters Booklet. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee support this article. Government and Bylaw Committee favorably reports.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. It was unanimous. We now move on to A, Alpha followed by Bravo, followed by Hotel.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee Member Don Southard moves that the town appropriate and transfer the sum set forth in the Fall Town Meeting Voters Booklet on page 30, all for the purpose of paying unpaid bills and adjustments from the prior fiscal year. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee support this article.
Moved and seconded. I've been now told that everybody does have a clicker.
Does anybody not have a clicker?
Does anybody not have a clicker? This will be very helpful. Oh, one person. You can have my clicker, we'll work it out. See what I sacrificed for this town? You better return it when you're done. Now, is there anybody who does not have a clicker who wants one? All right. This is nine tenths. So, you have heard the motion. All those in favor, press A. And opposed, press B when I pound my call. Ready, go. Motion carries. It looks like it's more than 90%. Can you tell us, Mike?
96% yes, 357.
96% yes. So that motion carries. Thank you. We now move on to Article B.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee Member Paul DeRozier moves that the town amend the votes taken under Articles 5, 5A, 5B, 5C, 6, 6A, and/or 6B of the April 27, 2019 Annual Town Meeting by transferring the sum set forth in the Fall Town Meeting Voters Booklet for Article B motion on page 31, and in the amounts and for the purposes specified therein, and further that the $900,000 transfer from the sale of real estate fund to the DPW facility account be contingent upon the passage of Article H and the associated ballot question. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee support this article.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, any explanation, any discussion? Yes, Toby.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. We generally don't pay a great deal of attention to the transfers. It's not raised and appropriated, it's not coming out of our pockets, it's money that's there already. My feeling is that perhaps that's a mistake. I asked the Finance Committee if we could have explanations of any use of money for any purpose that we had not previously funded, whether it was purchase of services or goods. And one of the things that we're being asked to fund is, I believe, bottles to be attached to the fountains, something we've not had before. I tend to think it's a good thing, but I'm asking them to explain to us if any of these transfers are for things that we've not already funded.
Mr. Moderator, through you, there is one item that has not previously been funded, and it is $5,000 transferred to public properties, purchase of services, and that is a retrofit for the current water fountains that we have, two at T-Warf and one at Town Hall. So the current ones are the original ones. These would be replaced with water fountain plus a bottle refill unit that you can fill a water bottle back up with.
So you wouldn't have to use a plastic water bottle?
If you chose not to, yes.
Any other questions? All right. You have heard the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries. Article H.
Mr. Moderator, DPW Commissioner Chair Jim Gardner moves that the town appropriate $11,350,000 to design, construct, and equip a new Department of Public Works facility at 2 DPW Way off Upper Main Street, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow said amount under pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, provided, however, that no sum shall be borrowed or expended hereunder unless the town shall have vote to exclude from the limitations on total property taxes contained in Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), also known as Proposition 2 1/2, the amounts required to repay the principal of and interest on any bonds or notes issued pursuant to this vote. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, Building Study Committee, and DPW Commissioners support this article.
And this requires a 2/3 vote. Probably no one wants to talk about this, but is there anybody who wants to talk about this?
We might have a few words with the moderator.
Come on up.
My name is Monica Lawton, and I've been privileged to serve as the Chair of the Building Study Committee for the Town of Rockport since we were appointed by the Selectmen last fall. And with me here today, I have our fellow members Kate Johns Shaw and Jeffrey Juvalaire, and we also worked with the Supportive Town Administrator Mitch Viera. Together, we ask that you support Article H to authorize appropriations for a new DPW facility for the Town of Rockport. And this is not something that we do lightly at all, because we are taxpayers too, so it's very hard for us. But it's something we feel very strongly must be done. It's been put off for many, many years in favor of other priorities, and will only continue to cost more if we wait. As someone said on Facebook, this building is past its expiration date, and the time to do this is now. Before we get into the details, it really is important that everyone understand that our committee was not appointed to rubber stamp this project or to build any project. We were appointed to take an independent look at all of our town buildings and assess their current conditions and needed improvements, and recommend priorities for action. We were to finish a study that was started in 2015 and never quite got done. So we brought a lot of professional expertise to this task. Myself, I have, my background is commercial construction, working with trade contractors who build major buildings in the Commonwealth, in both the public and private sector. I have a deep knowledge of the public construction bidding laws and the procurement of public buildings. Jeff Juvalaire is a money guy. He's in financial management, and as you know, construction is all about money. And Kate Johns Shaw has 40 years' experience as an architect. So we took our role very, very seriously. We visited all 22 buildings in town, and we interviewed all of our 12 department managers in depth. And we concluded from that process that all of our buildings, except one, are fundamentally solid and will serve our needs into the future with repairs as needed. What we found is that we have no other emergencies, and there are no other big projects right around the corner, which I know is a concern to many people in this room. But the DPW barn is one, the one exception. And to understand why, I'd like you to hear from Kate Johns Shaw, who, as an architect, is perhaps best qualified to give us an opinion on this. Kate?
I've been a practicing restoration architect for 40 years, and my first choice is always to restore rather than demolish. I've been involved in the restoration of such large-scale public buildings as the Equitable Building in downtown Manhattan and the New York Public Library. Like many of the town-owned buildings in Rockport, these buildings are worth restoring. The DPW barn is not worth restoring. It is a bare-bones utilitarian building when it was built in the 1950s, and it is now, over 60 years later, unsafe and well beyond its useful life. It owes us nothing. The barn's occupancy classification under the Massachusetts Building Code is H2, High Hazard. This is just below the highest hazard classification of H1, which includes buildings that deal with explosives. The barn houses paints and solvents and blowtorches and gasoline and oil. It also houses people and a multimillion-dollar fleet of town vehicles. The first thing I noticed when I walked into this high-hazard building was the unfire-protected wooden-truss roof structure and no sprinklers, a fire, if not an explosion, waiting to As Monica said, the Building Study Committee was tasked with touring and studying all 22 town buildings and with formulating a plan for their best uses. Of all the buildings, we only identified one that needed to be demolished and replaced, the DPW barn. All the others were deemed solid and serviceable and worthy of renovated as needed, as our finances permit as well. There are no other building emergencies that need our immediate attention. The barn does. In addition, an important feature of the new facility is to have all TBW employees in one building. Currently, DPW admin and engineering offices are taking up space in the Town Hall. Once they've moved to a new DPW building, meeting the future space needs of the core town administration buildings will be possible without major additions. In the long term, this will save the town money. The Building Study Committee recommends that we approve the article. Thank you.
So as you've heard from Kate, the DPW barn is a serious safety hazard and a liability for the town. In a fire, employees could be injured and many of our vehicles destroyed, and not all would be covered by insurance. We could face million-dollar lawsuits for negligence and have to pay more to outsource services like snow plowing, for example, if this were to happen in the wintertime. Plus, there would be the cost of rebuilding, which would be higher under emergency conditions. And if you think that this can't or won't happen, I'd ask you to think again, because it has happened almost every year for the past 10 years in Massachusetts or in our neighboring states with DPW buildings of the same vintage as ours. And I believe we have a slide on this? And I believe we have a slide on this? In Connecticut, 2011; Hopkinton, New Hampshire, 2012; Linfield, '23; Concord, New Hampshire, '25, and it goes on to the next pages for 2016 and 2017 as well. So this happens, and I don't think we want to see it happen here in Rockport. You might think we could just install sprinklers and be done with the problem, but no, we can't because this building's structure will not support the installation of a sprinkler system. But potential fires and accidents aside, the building is simply inadequate for the needs of a department that has grown in size and in scale of operations over the past 63 years, just as the town has grown in size during that period of time. The building is too small to house all of our vehicles, and many of them remain outside. And winter weather, as we all know, is hard on vehicles and making them harder to start, more prone to breakdown. So we ran the numbers, and we found that bringing all of the vehicles inside that are outside now will not only reduce maintenance costs but prolong their life and save us, at a minimum, over $100,000 every year in vehicle replacement costs. We have the statistics on this, and Jeff will show you a little bit more about that later. But if you've been up to the barn, you know that even keeping some of our vehicles indoors is really tough because they're jammed and crammed in a way that looks absolutely ridiculous. We didn't stage it that way last Saturday. That's what you have to do to get those vehicles inside, and it is just absurd. We need a larger building. And the time it takes to jockey those vehicles around, time is money, and response time for emergencies can suffer. Now, we did provide a lot of information in advance of Town Meeting on the website, and I do hope you had a chance to look through it. There is a report in your handout that really goes into a lot of detail, and we're not covering all of that same information in our talk today. But we do know the first question that many people ask is, "Why not just renovate? Why not fix it up?" Well, we did look at that. We spent a long time looking at that. As Jeff Alberti from Weston and Sampson knows, I think we harassed him back and forth with questions after questions after questions after questions about renovating that building. But we concluded it didn't make sense. It's the proverbial throwing good money after bad, and by the time we would be finished, we would be spending more than if we tore it down and started new. Not only is the structure bad, but every system in the building needs replacing: the electrical, the plumbing, the HVAC, the fire protection, just to meet current building codes. The building has no dedicated space to maintain the buildings. There's no pit. There are no vehicle lifts. There's no place to properly store all of those hazardous fluids that Kate mentioned earlier. And the current building cannot be retrofitted to accommodate the spaces and to accommodate the heavy-duty industrial systems that are required in the building. We would have to build an addition. And again, building that would cost more than starting new, and we would end up with an awkward kludge-together building that would be inefficient from the day we cut the ribbon on it. So taking all of this into consideration, we concluded that the plan that had been put forward in 2016 is still the most cost-effective option for the town for a building that will serve our needs as a town for the next 50 years or more. But I want to assure you, this is not a Taj Mahal that we're talking about here. It's a pre-engineered metal structure, which is the most economical type of building to build, and it includes just the essentials, which is not to say we're shortchanging ourselves. It's a building that has been carefully designed to give us what we need, but nothing more that we don't want to pay for. The plan was put together by Weston and Sampson, which is one of the top engineering firms in the state with experience on more than 100 DPW facilities of this type across the region. And as I mentioned, Jeff Alberti from Weston and Sampson is here today, and I'm sure he'll be happy to answer any questions that the three of us can't today. Where'd you pass that water, Kate? We know that some people are concerned that this plan has been around a few years, since 2016 and maybe before that. So there's concern that it might be outdated and that we won't have the technology we need for the future. And I want to assure everyone in the room that that is absolutely not the case. The plans we have are what are called preliminary schematic design plans. The final plans for the building will not be done until this project is approved. So we have time to make changes and make sure that that plan is exactly what we need. We know that the building will be solar-ready and will have the most cost-effective, energy-efficient systems that are available to us, including charging stations for electric vehicles, heat recovery units, natural daylighting, variable frequency drives, and automatic lighting control systems. And we're also building a structure that can be updated as required to accommodate new technologies and new vehicles and changing building codes. And let's not forget that Rockport is already a designated green community. So our town is committed to renewable energy and energy conservation, and we have a very active Green Communities Task Force that has already implemented projects in a number of our buildings, I believe even in the schools here, that are saving us money. So we will work closely with the task force and take advantage of grants that are available to us for things like solar panels, electric vehicles, charging stations, and the like. In other words, for grants for energy savings technologies that can be applied in the building. In fact, just today, we have learned about a program from National Grid that will help us during the final design process and perhaps with the purchase and installation of energy-efficient systems. So we are looking to the future. None of us can foresee the future, but to the extent we can, we are looking to install the very best systems possible to serve our needs today and take us into the future. But these grants will not reduce the cost of constructing the building itself. There just are no grants available for that. So that kind of gets us to the building and to the costs. I know that's of great concern to everyone. I hope you had a chance to look at the floor plan for the building, which we've had on the website, but there was a big poster right outside that shows you the floor plan, and there was also a rendering to show you what the building will look like. I think we have a quick view of it here on the screen. It's exactly in the location of the current building, on the same footprint, but it is larger. The long upper T portion runs along Nugent Stretch, and where it says DPW facility, that is projecting into the DPW yard. And over to the left, we see a little salt shed. The majority of the building is for the vehicle storage space that we badly need, the area that says DPW facility, about 13,000 square feet of enclosed and open canopy space. The number six there is going to be open canopy. It's not going to be enclosed and heated because there is some equipment that just doesn't need that. But even as large as that may sound, I want to tell you, it will not fit all of our buildings, buildings, the vehicles. It will fit most of them, the ones that are most critical to put outside. But this plan went through a lot of scrutiny back in 2016, and it was reduced 20%, and much of that reduction came from the vehicle storage area. Looking at it very realistically, there are things we can do. We can keep some equipment outside. So it really has been minimized for us. Another 6,000 square feet is for code-required spaces, and that's more or less what you see across the upper T. Number four, I think, is the vehicle wash area. Number two is the vehicle maintenance area with vehicle lifts. We have a fluid storage area that isn't defined, but it's in that same vicinity. And then we have shops, the workshops where the employees work and doing a lot of fabricating in there and probably using a lot of those solvents that we talked about. And then the number-one area in yellow is a combination of administrative employee offices, break room. Just to the right of number three is a whole area of locker room, showers, toilet facilities, et cetera. And almost all of that, up to the far right, is mandated by the building codes. So as I said, the building had already been reduced in 2016 for the vehicles, and there really is nothing left to cut out, and most of the spaces across the top are mandated by the building codes, over which we have no control. We don't have any choice where that's concerned. Now, I did want to mention that we did recommend some additions, and I see that this particular plan doesn't have it. Oh, yes, it does. I'm sorry. Yeah. Where the number one is, underneath the number one are two boxes, and that's a space that was designated for vehicles, an open canopy space. But we really felt it would be in the long-term best interest of the town to fit that out as offices for the DPW administrative staff. Okay. All right. All right.
We have to hear from a lot of people. If you could wrap this up, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I hope everyone had a chance to look in their books. The administrative offices will get management on-site, and I know that's a concern to a lot of people. We have a pie chart. We won't go into, but just put it up on the screen so that people can see, if you would. This is a pie chart. It's on the website, and it explains very carefully how all the costs are broken down. All of the costs are accounted for. The $12.25 million, every line item in the budget is accounted for, backed up by 23 pages of detailed breakdown. And let's see, what point?
We're going to next hear from Ruth George from the Board of Selectmen, followed by Laureen Wessel from the FinCom, and Jim Gardner as soon as this committee is done with their presentation, but we would like to move it along as quickly as possible. Remember my axiom.
All right. Last word on this is that the costs are not going to come down ever for this project, and it's really something we need to undertake now. Thank you.
I have just a couple of brief comments, Jeff Juveler, three slides, and then a final comment. So this will be pretty fast. It's all imagery. Sorry for the people up there that won't see it, but it's going to happen over here, and I'll be as quick as I can. First, I'd like to thank everyone that's here tonight. Democracy is messy, but it really is the best option that we have, so thank you all for coming here tonight. Tonight, we're trying to get your support just to move this to the general public vote in October. Okay? So keep that in mind, please. And then finally, I'd just like to thank all the volunteers that make this town a great place, from the people who tend to our flowers, to the paramedics and firefighters that help us keep us safer. So thank you all. Thank you very much. Slide number six. Next one. Next one. Great. Okay. You may have heard this already, but if you can see my green thing, Rockport's current tax rate at $9.86 is the 34th lowest out of 351 towns. If you, the question has arisen about whether or not there is an ebb and flow to the taxes. The tax rate does indeed ebb and flow. Your total tax burden may not, but understand that projects come on and off. Big projects come on and off. The police station is coming off very soon, and other people smarter than I in town can comment on that. But the fact is, if you look at this chart down here on the lower left, this goes back to 2013. You can see where our taxes were then. They went up, they went down, they went up, and now they've dropped down to $9.86. Questions? I'd love to hear those questions after. Next slide, please. This is a bar chart showing where we have all of our town assessed values. They're broken down in $100,000 increments. So for example, right here, $400,000 to $500,000, there's 750 homes in that assessed range, between $400,000 and $500,000. And the average is 548 for all types of residencies. Single-home residencies are higher appraised. They're just one category. So the average is here. I'll note that there's full-time residents on both sides of that. Okay? So there's plenty to be spread around that chart. Next, please. I'll go quicker. All right. Cost of community, we are 95% residential property here. It's the highest property to maintain. So while we have a tranquil town, and we love that, the cost to do that for all these people that manage our budgets is very challenging. Commercial here is, if you look in the state, it's versus residential, it's 1/4th, 1/5th the cost to maintain commercial. So while we love our tranquil city and town, and I love it too, there's a tremendous burden to manage that properly, and we've done a great job. I'll put in perspective the original building that we're looking to replace in 1956, 63 years ago, when it was built. The tax rate then was $66 per thousand. The building, if you look at what it cost back then, and you inflate that by a reasonable number, we're right at $12 million. So the people before us, who put that building into place, had to struggle with the same issue, same cost, at $66 per thousand. Okay? Next slide. We can debate how much savings we'll have by putting more vehicles and machinery into a new building, but I will tell you this. If we do the math on 10 out of 16 vehicles that are outdoors right now, and 2 out of the 4 large machinery that are outdoors right now, and the spreadsheet behind this is all available online, over the life of the loan, if it's a 20-year loan, we're talking in the neighborhoods of $3 million savings because cars inside, by our informed experts, get three extra years of life out of them. Okay? So I'm happy to debate that number. I don't know what the number is, but understand too that extra maintenance will not have to be done on those vehicles as well. So I have a closing comment, and then we're ready for questions. The rule of thumb that most of us live by when we buy a car is, don't put any more money into it unless it's worth more than the cost of the value of the car. Okay? That's, I think, a fair rule of thumb. A car in 1956, when this building was made, you could buy on average for $2,000. Today, the average car you would buy new, I don't care if you want to do the math in used, but I'm using apples to apples, $37,000. So if you're someone who wanted to be parsimonious and keep your car going, and one day you woke up 63 years later and you want a new car, you'd probably be shocked. You probably would be. We can take the $12.5 million, and we can divide that We can take the $12.5 million, and we can divide that elephant, the expression, how do you eat an elephant, one bite at a time? We can divide that elephant into 10 cents a person per day. That's what it'll cost us. Do the math on that. I'm happy to go through the numbers. Believe me, I've stayed up cranking it three or four nights in a row. So happy to talk that all through. Thank you for your time. We hope this passes tonight and hopefully later on in October. Thank you.
Before we go any further, I would like to recognize that Senator Tar is back there. And so we'd like to thank him for all of his service to our community. And I'm going to help him go boat shopping. All right. We are going to hear from Ruth. Ruth, are you here? All right.
Good evening. My name is Ruth George. I'm on the Board of Selectmen. I'm a liaison to the DPW Board of Commissioners, and I've been to almost every building study committee since this new building study committee has been in existence. The Board of Selectmen has unanimously voted to support the DPW facility. The Building Study Committee recommended its top priority as this building. We've met with the Finance Committee, DPW Board of Commissioners, the Building Study Committee, and the Board of Selectmen in an open meeting discussing recommendations from the Building Study Committee. And at that group, we all voted independently to endorse this project. We had four different meetings going on in Town Hall, Room A, and every group supported this unanimously. The two questions I see are, is it needed? Yes, it's needed. But what, at what price? We are in the same position three years ago. $8 million. The voters approved it at town meeting. The voters denied it at the polls by a very slim vote. We have a completely different Building Study Committee this time. We have new Board of Selectmen members. We have some new people on the DPW Board of Commissioners. And we have a lot of new Finance Committee members. And they all came to the same conclusion. Three years later, we need this building done now. Now, instead of 8 million, it's 11.3 or 12 million. Let's not wait any longer. The price will not go down. We are looking at a 20-year bond debt exclusion. As Jeff said, we're the 34th lowest tax rate in Massachusetts and the lowest on the North Shore. And even with the addition of this new building, we will still be the lowest on the North Shore. Many years ago, we had three items that the first Building Study Committee many, many years ago looked at. The schools, the police department, and the DPW facility. We've done this beautiful school complex. I was in the first group that graduated from 7th grade through high school, the first year it opened. And we've got a new police station that we're very proud of. That last piece is this DPW barn. 50% of this cost, as you've heard, are mandated costs that we have to do once we touch that building to do anything on it. They are mandated code compliance that we need to do. Just like the police, these are services that keep Rockporters safe, and that we expect this and we need this in our town. Safety has to be our major concern with this building. 1956, I was six years old. I remember that previous DPW facility on Pleasant Street, and it was a barn. It had two bays or something. And this new facility was beautiful way back then, but it is way outdated. This is progress. We need a new, safe building. I represent a lot of people in town. I'm a single, retired, senior citizen. And this is important to me. It's important that we do this for our children and grandchildren. Our parents and grandparents have done this all the way along, supported the buildings that we need in town to keep this a beautiful, safe town. DPW work hits everyone and every age, every day, whether you're a senior to whether you're the kids in school, having them plow to get you to school, the seniors to have shoveled walkways, to have our beaches safe and our roads safe. When I go to sleep at night and we have a raging storm outside, I want to know that the employees are out there doing their best for us during that blizzard at night, and that they're safe in a safe building that we are providing for them. Thank you.
Good evening. Laureen Wessel, Finance Committee Chair. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article H. It is fiscally prudent to approve Article H as a debt exclusion. Just to explain a little bit, a debt exclusion opposed to an override means that it will eventually go away, and in this case, over 20 years. And an override is a permanent addition to a town's tax levy limit. A debt exclusion is meant to finance a particular project such as this. The levy limit is the total amount any community is allowed to raise through taxation. In terms of long-term debt, the Finance Committee encourages Town Meeting to maintain a conservative percentage of the tax rate to be applied to long-term debt without neglecting the physical needs of the infrastructure. With proper attention to our needs, similar amounts of the new excluded debt can be assumed, while the past debts retired maintain a consistent tax rate. Based on the median value of a home in Rockport, which is $513,350, this will cost $19.67 per month per household, a total of $236 per year over a 20-year borrowing period at approximately 4.7%. The Finance Committee also feels a moral and ethical obligation to our DPW workers, who are or could be our friends and family. They serve each resident of Rockport in some capacity, and we have put them in an unsafe environment. I just want to say, four years ago, I walked through that facility personally, and it had nothing to do with any of this particular matter. And I couldn't believe how unsafe and how dilapidated that building was. I was appalled at how dangerous it was. Not only is it unfair to expect any of our town employees to work in conditions such as this, it could serve as a very costly liability if there were an accident, which could very possibly happen. The Finance Committee does not endorse this kind of knowing possible expense. The Building Study Committee has done an excellent job vetting this project as well. In 216, as was already stated, this project was to cost $8.5 million. As materials and labor continue to rise, the cost of this inevitable project will continue to increase. We are now looking at an $11.350 million. And if we put it off, it will continue to increase. Again, the Finance Committee strongly recommends approval of Article H. Thank you.
Laureen. Jim Gardner.
Good evening, everyone. I don't actually have a lot to add. I think the Building Study Committee did a very good job at bringing up all the salient points, and I think Laureen and Ruth have also touched on all the important points. There are a couple of points, though, that I just wanted to make, and in the interest of keeping things short. First thing is that I think the Commissioners would like the public to understand that replacing the DPW facility is not a new idea. This is, we brought this up three years ago, but in fact, DPW Commissioners dating back to 1990s had been looking at trying to get the building replaced. And they had actually engaged consultants at that time, and had had plans drawn up with the idea that the building really needed to be improved and/or replaced. And the idea of fixing and the existing facility had been considered many times, but had been repeatedly rejected because the structure was never designed to contain or support the kind of fire suppression, ventilation, or hazmat equipment that the building code requires. At the same time, plans to raise the facility and replace it were often not brought forward because of the anticipated negative reaction to the cost, which I'm here, we'll hear something about, or because the town had more compelling financial needs at the time, which means that this facility has kind of been a liability for the last 30 years. We've known about it, but we have not been able to do anything about it. And hopefully, at this point, we will have the courage to actually take the step and do something about it. The second thing I think the Commissioners would like the public to understand is that the current condition of the building and the fact that the building is not up to code is not because the DPW has been negligent in taking care of it. We've essentially been forced to refrain from making improvements to the building because of a state building code that would force us to bring the building up to code 100% if we made any significant improvements to it. In other words, we can't selectively make partial improvements to the building without having the state come in and force us to make all the code-related improvements. And the building is simply not designed to accommodate those upgrades. So we've been in kind of a catch-22 for a long time with a building that desperately needs to be improved, but if we made any improvements to it, we'd have to improve the entire thing, and the building isn't designed to accept those upgrades. So finally, the Commissioners hope the Town Meeting sees fit to place this question on the ballot. Whether you think the cost is justified or not, whether you think the design is correct or not, we feel it is important for the town as a whole to weigh in on this matter because it is a complex and expensive project, and one that will have an impact on town operations for many years to come. Thank you.
Let's hear from the voters.
Charles Peterman, 22 Pleasant Street. I completely support that the DPW absolutely needs new barn, and I'm ashamed personally that we've basically held the people who take care of our roads during the winter hostage while we debate this. That said, the costs concern me. $12.9 million is the same budget that we have for repaving from Gloucester all the way to Wenham for the next four years on 128. The equivalent barn structure built on Route 3 in Billrica at Exit 27, including a salt barn, was completed in 2016 for a cost of $4.9 million, including site survey and mass compliance. I understand that we have a projection here of $5.8 million. Could we go to the cost, please? We have a projection of five, the spreadsheet, of $5.8 million for the actual facility and roughly $6 million for all of the compliance work. Within that, there's $100,000 for provisional services during the time under which the building is being demolished and renovated to house the DPW. I don't see that as being sufficient to holding them for roughly a year. Lastly, and possibly the most questionable, is I don't see any provisions in this plan. Should the site survey or any of the work that the state of Massachusetts wants to undertake to assess the site come back with, "No, we aren't going to allow you to build on that site again." Considerations for when we're actually voting on this? As I said, I support the DPW having a facility that's safe and available. Thank you.
Alan. That's a nice green shirt.
Alan McMillan, 18-story street, Pigeon Cove. I am 100% in favor of this. I think it's a no-brainer for the community. In fact, I personally think that a vote against this is a vote against your town. The DPW in any community is the blood, sweat, and tears of the town. Nothing happens for plowing the roads, fixing broken water mains, sewer, et cetera, without a functioning DPW. In terms of, yeah, I lost my train of thought. Anyhow.
Were you a conductor?
No, engineer, engineer. This is something that happens, has to happen for us to function as a community. The Board of Selectmen, the DPW, everyone else has pointed out why this is so important. The one thing I have not heard is any positive aspect of this. Currently, Rockport, all the police cruisers, the fire engines, they have to be shipped out of town for oil changes. They have to be shipped out of town for repairs. I'd like to hear someone from the DPW or some town board here talk about the money savings that would occur if we could change the oil and filter and police cruisers in the new DPW garage, change and repair the oil on fire engines here in town, and perhaps other things as well. So this isn't just spending money. This has the potential for the town to save money as well. And please remember, a vote against this is truly a vote against your town that you all profess to love. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
David Kaplan, 14 Drumlin Road. I admit that I started out as a skeptic on this and last time around voted against it, but I have gone to the presentations the committee has made this time around. It's very, very clear that they've put a tremendous amount of work in it. It's very, very clear that these people really know their stuff. They know what they're doing. I also think that we've spent a tremendous amount of time explaining why this is the right thing to do. And I don't think that if we go on talking about this for another three hours, it will change very many minds. So if this isn't out of order... I would like to call for the question. Let's vote.
All right. Calling the question requires a 2/3 vote. It's not debatable, so get out your clickers. Our tech folks are just setting up. If they had a proper facility, it would be quicker, but it's going to take them a little while. So moving the question, not debatable, not discussable, we're just going to vote on it. If 2/3 of you vote to move the question, we will then go immediately to a vote on the question, which also is a 2/3 vote. So give us a moment. Feel free to talk to your neighbor and try to change their mind on this. All right. Here we go. Grab your clicker. All those in favor of moving to an immediate vote on Question H are going to press 1. All those that still want to talk about this thing for a while longer, press 2. Ready? Go. I was educated in the Rockport school systems. I do believe that 90% is greater than 2/3, so we will go into the question immediately. You ready? All right. We are now voting on Article H. All those in favor of doing this appropriation as per the article are going to press 1, and those opposed are going to press 2. And this requires a 2/3 vote. On my mark, go. Eighty-seven, which is greater than sixty-seven, so that is a positive vote on Article H. If for whatever reason that was your excitement and you need to go, please leave quietly. Remember to return your clickers and come visit us next spring. We still have a lot of excitement, so please stick around. Lot of excitement. We're doing N. We are going to continue. Please be quiet if you are leaving. Don't make me do this. All right, the chair will entertain a motion under Article N.
Mr. Moderator, Board of Selectmen member Don Campbell moves to amend the Town of Rockport Code of Bylaws, Chapter fourteen, Environmental Protection and Public Health, Section E five, Historic District, Subsection C. An approved Article N is printed in the warrant and is set forth on pages forty-eight and forty-nine of the Fall Town Meeting Voters booklet. Board of Selectmen and Historic District Commission support this article. Government and Bylaw Committee favorably reports.
Moved in seconded. This, by the way, even though it says majority, requires a two-thirds majority. Anybody have any questions that want to discuss this? All right, since it's two-thirds, we're going to use the clicker. You have heard the motion. All those in favor, press one. Opposed, press two. Article N. What page? Motion's on page forty-eight. All right, one for yes and two for no. On my mark, go. We go now to... By two-thirds. We are now moving on to F, as in foxtrot.
Mr. Moderator, Board of Selectmen member Don Campbell moves to town appropriate the sum of twenty-one thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars from police fiscal year nineteen encumbered funds and the sum of six thousand seven hundred and two dollars from the Labor Reserve for a total sum of twenty-eight thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars to fund the cost items contained in the first year of the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Rockport and the Rockport Police Association Local one fifty-four, with the agreement covering the term of July first, two thousand eighteen through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, and to confirm any previous appropriations expended to fund the cost items contained in said agreement. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee support this article.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All right. Heard the motion. All those in favor, just to do something different, please stand up. And stretch a little bit. All right. Thank you. That was it. Now all those opposed, say no. All right, that carries its unanimous. We now move on to G for golf.
Mr. Moderator, Board of Selectmen Chair Paul Murphy moves to town appropriate the sum of thirty-nine thousand eleven dollars from the General Fund Labor Reserve, sum of fifteen thousand six hundred nine dollars from the Water Labor Reserve, and sum of fifteen thousand two hundred fifty-nine dollars from the Sewer Labor Reserve for a total sum of sixty-nine thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars to fund the cost items contained in the first year of the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Rockport and AFSMI Local sixteen seventy-nine Supervisors and Foreman Unit, with the agreement covering the term of July first, two thousand nineteen through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and to confirm any previous appropriations expended to fund the cost items contained in said agreement. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee support this article.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We move on to Article P, but before we do that, we're going to pick the next ones using our sophisticated system developed by NASA. Followed by K. All right.
Mr. Moderator, Board of Selectmen member Sarah Wilkinson moves to town approve Article P is printed in the warrant and is set forth on page fifty of the Fall Town Meeting Voters booklet. Board of Selectmen supports this article.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Let's hear from the chief. If you're somewhere else in town, you can go like hell right about now.
We still have a few officers on the road, so we're in good hands. Good evening, everyone. My name is John Horvath. I'm the Chief of Police, one sixty-eight Main Street. I'd like to begin by introducing the officers here this evening with me, beginning to my left Officer Phil Wesley, who's our School Resource Officer, Lieutenant Michael Marino, Officer Greg George, and Assistant Chief Mark Schmink. I'm here to take a couple minutes to explain civil service to you and how it impacts our police department. Massachusetts Civil Service is a unit within the state's Human Resources Division. The primary purpose of civil service, when the Massachusetts Legislature enacted it in eighteen eighty-four, that's a hundred and thirty-five years ago, was to protect hiring and discipline from patronage and political interference. Today, we have comprehensive policies and collective bargaining that afford these same protections against those things. The State Civil Service Commission handles appeals from employees who have been disciplined or bypassed for promotion and from applicants who have been bypassed for employment. Non-civil service employees have adequate protections currently through collective bargaining that address disciplinary procedures through a just cause standard. The civil service system in Massachusetts is no longer up to the important task of helping government recruit and hire the most talented personnel. The benefits to removal from civil service include the following: greater flexibility for the hiring and promotional process; we will no longer be tied to the state of Massachusetts' extended burdensome time periods associated with new hires and promotional exams. What does that mean? We currently deal with long waiting periods for components of the hiring process for police officers due to timelines established for the needs of larger police agencies across the Commonwealth unrelated to our local needs here in Rockport. We currently face police examination lists with expiration dates and overly technical administrative procedures that tie our hands locally here in our attempt to hire officers we need in a timely and efficient manner. What does that all mean? That results in delayed hiring and a related increased cost to the town, as well as increased staffing challenges due to the limited resources that we will have. With removal from civil service, the town will be able to determine our own expiration dates for examinations and promotional lists. The town can set minimum eligibility requirements not allowed under civil service, such as educational levels. The town can determine what hiring preferences are important to acknowledge, such as residency, military service, EMT, and paramedic certifications, language proficiency, prior academies, and similar law enforcement-related certifications. As it stands now, the state of Massachusetts, to a large degree, chooses your police officers for the Town of Rockport. That is a selection that should be done on a more local level. Under the current system, we as a police department must hire one of the first three eligible available candidates on a civil service list unless there is a significant derogatory reason not to hire such individuals. Technically, this is known as the two N plus one candidate ratio. By removing our department from civil service, we will have a much larger candidate pool to choose from. Rockport is not a stepping stone for careers elsewhere. As the Chief of this department and town resident, I want the best officers for the job who want to work in Rockport and remain here for many, many years to come. I do not want to settle for average because of the current system that is in place to select our officers for us. With removal from civil service, we will have an increased ability to incorporate community and department-specific criteria into promotional exams for your supervisors. Recruitment and retention are realities that must be dealt with in every profession, and policing, the importance of both cannot be overstated. It is for all these reasons that I support removing the Rockport Police Department from civil service, laws and rules which govern police hiring process and the police promotional process. I want to thank you for your time and attention and for supporting our police department. Lieutenant Marino?
Good evening, Lieutenant Marino, one sixty-eight Main Street, Rockport. I fully support coming out of civil service. It's going to be a good move for our department, you know, for many of the reasons the Chief Horvath just stated. It's going to improve staffing and recruitment, which is something we desperately need. So thank you for your time.
Any comments, questions, concerns? Yes, sir.
Tom DeGaleini from seventy Eden Road. I have just a couple of questions. The chief mentioned that, you know, a hundred and twenty years ago, or whenever, one of the reasons was the removal of political influence and patronage, and I'm wondering if that wouldn't still be a concern now, that if you throw out the civil service system, that it will be subject to patronage and political influence. I'm wondering if... Second question, who will administer the selection system? Will it be just come in for an interview with the chief? Will it be a company that will administer tests? Who will do the background checks and that kind of thing? And thirdly, will the new selection system be subject to collective bargaining? Thank you.
Darren Klein, KP Law, through the moderator. I can answer probably two and a half of the three questions. The first question is, when the law was passed, there obviously weren't the same amount of laws that exist today. For instance, the anti-discrimination laws that are on, that apply to everybody in the public sector and the private sector, but especially in the public sector, are far different today, and they probably were even non-existent a hundred and thirty-five years ago. There is anti-discrimination laws that apply to this town for every employment decision they make, both federal laws and state laws that both apply very rigorously to the town. Second, there's conflict of interest laws that address some of the political influences that civil service was intended to a hundred and thirty-five years ago. And most importantly, there's public bargaining laws in which the union and the police department administration, both of which were up here, have negotiated procedures and standards for discipline of employees and even hiring. To get to your third question, there has been a very specific process and language that has been negotiated and agreed upon between the union and the town for things such as promotions, and obviously, the sides, as that process continues, can continue to negotiate if there needs to be changes. As far as the second question is who will administer, that will be administered by the town and the police department, but there's different... One of the nice parts of being out of civil service is allows them, depending on, you know, who the nature of the position that's being hired, they can sort of address the process through either an assessment center, a panel, that still comes up with identifiable sort of procedures that allow for a very documented hiring process. I don't, I'm not privy to exactly what that process is at the moment, but you know, if there's any follow-up questions, I'm sure the chief can give some more specifics.
And you didn't answer half a question, and Toby's going to check the bill next year, so make sure you don't charge for that. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Way in the back. Okay. We'll get you a microphone.
I have a...
Please state your name.
Yeah. Claire Harper, Hybe Road. I have a lot of concerns about taking away the safeguards that have been put into place. It seems like over the years, I've heard of other towns having problems with nepotism or having people on the force that maybe shouldn't be there for whatever reason, and I like, I think more oversight, it sounds cumbersome and irritating, but it was put in place to protect people, and I like the idea of people coming from the outside and not only hiring from within a town. I think we've seen examples of that in just Gloucester, what happens when you just hire people from within a town. Sometimes you don't get the best employee choices. So I am, although I don't fully understand everything you're saying about the existing oversight that would remain in place, I support the idea of keeping this cumbersome, irritating process, just in case it's beneficial over the long run.
So just very quickly, Darren Klein again, through the moderator. So the protection that civil service allows for as far as disciplining employees, is employees can only be disciplined for just cause. That exact same standard is in the party's collective bargaining agreement and has been in the party's collective bargaining agreement, I'm going to guess, for close to forty or fifty years. So it's literally the exact same standard. Also, under the collective bargaining agreement, even while they're in civil service, an employee has the right to either appeal a discipline to civil service or to an independent arbitrator, and more often than not, the employee actually picks the independent arbitrator. That's completely the employee's choice. And the last thing I would say is it doesn't impair the status of any current civil service police officer, so a police officer who's currently working for the town, not future hires, but current employees, if they so choose that they want to appeal discipline to civil service, they'll still have their rights, they're grandfathered essentially. So the protections are there, they're just there in the form of a collective bargaining agreement, not so much an antiquated system of civil service.
He has a gun. I had to call on him.
So I just wanted to speak to the ladies, a couple of questions here. So the system that we currently have in place, a civil service system, as I stated, in essence mandates us to hire certain people, okay? Not necessarily the best people for the job, maybe an average person that passes the test, doesn't have anything really bad in their background, has just kind of moved along through life. We have to hire that individual. As I stated, as a representative for the Chief of this department, my job is to hire the best people to serve your community. In the system we have, it's very, very difficult. We have a civil service list that we have to go through locally. We're lucky if we get two or three names. Then we have to petition for a statewide list where we get hundreds of names, where maybe we drill down through background investigations to maybe be able to hire three or four that are towards the bottom of this list. And this has gone on for the last three, at least the last two and a half to three years, and I've been here four years. So it's a challenging process, it's extremely time-consuming, and the state is picking our officers for us, make no mistake. The last thing... The last thing I'll say regarding one of your comments, just for a point of clarification, is we're not restricted to just hiring individuals from Rockport. We hire any individ, we would be available to hire any individual that took a promotional exam. So, they could be someone from the West Coast that wants to move to the East Coast and take the, the exam. It could be somebody from Cape Ann, it could be from somebody in the eastern part of the state or western part of the state. So, it's not only for Rockport residents. We as a town can determine whether or not we want to give residency a, an upper hand and look to hire local people. I think there's some extreme value in hiring people that are local, but I also like getting a more diverse group of officers to serve the community because I think that's, I think that's a positive thing. I think different opinions and different backgrounds create a better, a better and more well-rounded police department. So, I don't want you to, to get the wrong idea that we have to hire only local officers because we're getting out of the civil service process. The civil service process is a vehicle through which we hire, and it's a process that is flawed. It's no longer valid. It served a purpose back then, but to a lot of things that, that Attorney Klein has stated, it's, it's kind of gone past its date, and it's, it's holding us back as a department, and it's costing us money in the, in the interim. So, it would be negligent of me not to come before you and implore you to please make this change, not just for me as the administrator, but for the police officers that have to work next to one police officer who should be the best police officer, not somebody that just got by on the test and we have to hire them because the state says they're next on the list.
Hi. Catherine Clark, 35 High Street. I just have a clarification question. The chief said that under the present circumstances or the future circumstances that he would rather see, you hire military over non-military or not? Or, I just would like a clarification on that one.
The community can determine whether or not you want to make certain things like residency a priority, military experience a priority, education, language proficiency. So, we, we can pretty much as a community set the agenda with what we believe is important. So, obviously, military experience is something that is valued and is important and certainly would, would garner the appropriate level of acknowledgement and recognition for people that we hire. So, I'm not saying, yes, we're going to run out and hire all, you know, all retired military veterans or what have you, but that's certainly one of the things that we would look to do if those folks came forward and were looking for a job. But they would have to go through the process just like everybody else. And that process would be, as, as the attorney mentioned earlier, it's a testing process, a written exam, an, an oral board interview exam, and then an, an interview process with the Board of Selectmen, who's the appointing authority.
Yes, ma'am. We'll get you a microphone.
Stephanie Legatos, 227 Granite Street. I'm curious what the turnover has been in the police department over the last five to 10 years and just the, the impact of what you're proposing.
Sure, that's a great question. So, I've been here four years, I can speak to the last four years, but I think it's probably representative of the last probably 10 to 15 years at least. We make, we hire our full-time police officers currently through our reserve police officer pool. So, we hire reserve police officers who are not full-time employees, they're not, they're not benefited employees. They come in, they work for a reduced salary, they gain some experience, and then that's the pool of resource officers that we go to to fill full-time positions. We've had significant turnover in those positions for a lot of different reasons, most of which have been they want to get in with a police department so they can put that on their resume, and then they're going to go to a larger police department somewhere else. Because we have to hire them because they're civil service employees, they're on that list. We do the background investigation. If we can't identify something derogatory in their background that allows us to bypass them, we have to hire them. We are forced to hire the individuals. And since I've been here, we've had at least six to eight that have come in, sat in front of an interview panel, swore up and down that Rockport was where they wanted to be, and then three months later, oh, I have to resign my position. Oh, why is that? Oh, I'm getting hired by X agency for a reserve position, or I'm going to go here for a different position. So, you take people at their word, but if we move to a non-civil service process, it's going to give us the autonomy to really look at the people we're hiring and make sure that they're right for the town for the long term. And that three months that we, that we're, you know, bringing this individual onboard, we're doing a background investigation, we're looking at, you're looking at hours and hours and hours of making sure these individuals are right people for the job and investigations. That all costs time and money. For them to walk out after three months, we've just, we've just lost all that time and energy and money. Now, we have to turn around and go to the next person on the list and hope that they're being sincere and genuine when they say they want to work in Rockport. I hope that answers your question.
Please stand up so we can see you, so we can get these microphone people who are here way past their bedtime, but we're all here past our bedtime. But thank you, microphone carriers, you guys have been awesome.
Charles Peterman, 22 Pleasant Street. First question is with regards to the cost of whatever civil service exams or processes they apply, how much additional cost per candidate is going to be incurred upon the town if we move out of the civil service?
Take that, chief.
Sure. So, there'll, there'll be no cost to the town for the testing process for new hires because the way that system works is we work with a vendor who passes the, the cost, if you will, to the candidate. So, they give a written exam, the, the market rate is the candidate pays $100, they fill out an application, they pay $100 and they take the exam. The only thing the town has to do is provide a venue, such as the school cafeteria, they provide all the proctors, they do all the marketing. So, initial hiring costs us nothing. When we do promotional exams, which is something that, depending on the turnover within the police department, you may do every, I don't know, three to four years, maybe five on the long end, maybe two years on the short end. That would be an interview and assessment center process, and you're probably looking for five to $7,000, I would say.
Per candidate?
No, for the whole process. I mean, we have a small department, so if you have individuals testing for a sergeant's position, you're going to have a, a small handful. I mean, we, we currently have a promotional process going on right now. We have one individual taking a sergeant's exam, and we have one taking a lieutenant's exam.
Thank you. Civil service also provides ranking-
We, we have to go on to, can only get one shot at this. All right. Anybody else? Yes. We'll get you a microphone. That'll be easy.
I support the motion, but is the police department the only people on civil service anymore? Or are there other departments we would like to bring to local authority too?
There, you get that one?
As far, I can tell you locally, Cape Ann, Manchester by the Sea is, is a non-civil service police department. Manchester came out several years ago. As you can imagine, the larger the agency, the more difficult collective bargaining may be. So, there are certainly police departments throughout the Commonwealth that are non-civil service. There are a fair number that, probably a majority are civil service departments, but locally on Cape Ann, Manchester is the only non-civil service police department at this current time.
Sarah.
Sure. I'm Sarah Wilkinson, Board of Selectmen. Maybe that's better. I just want to add in that I think a lot of times in the news, you see kind of police unions versus the city or versus the town. This is really, I want to thank the police chief and the whole department. This has been, this is kind of being proposed in collaboration with the Board of Selectmen. We could not be happier to be working on this. This is good for the department, as, as the chief has mentioned, and it will be good for the town as a whole because we have seen firsthand the candidates that come in that you can tell have one foot out the door. And it's a drain on our resources, and this town deserves the best police department we can, we can have. And so, thank you, chief, and to the whole department for making this happen.
And to answer a previous question, the police are the only department in Rockport using civil service? All right. You've heard the question. All those in favor are going to press one on their clicker. All those opposed are going to press two on their clicker, starting now. Looks like that motion carries. All right, we have two related articles that are coming up next, and they are Articles K followed by Article M. Article L, the balloon article, just sort of popped, and we won't address that one tonight, was just full of hot air.
Mr. Moderator, Board of Selectmen member Denise Donnelly moves to amend the Town of Rockport Code of Bylaws, Chapter 14, Environmental Protection and Public Health, Section F, Single-Use Plastics Prohibition, and approve Article K as printed in the warrant and as set forth on Pages 41 through 44 of the Fall Town Meeting Voters booklet. In that Section A, purpose and intent be struck and replaced in its entirety with the following. A, purpose and intent, the use of single-use or non-durable food service wares harms the environment of the town of Rockport. The improper disposal of these items harms the land, water bodies, and the ocean. This may cause harm to or kill marine life. These items release toxins and greenhouse gases when they disintegrate or, if incinerated. And further, that the term "such as vinco" be struck throughout the article. Board of Selectmen support the article. Government bylaw, government and bylaw committee favorably reports.
Moved and seconded. And we have a young man here who's going to present this. It's always great to have young people here. How many people? How many people here are experiencing their first town meeting? All right. Anybody here from Southern California? Oh, one person right in the middle. Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you, Carl. Okay.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Nathaniel Kirby, and I am the president of the Rockport Public Schools Green Team, the school student-run environmental group. We have been working with Seaside Sustainability to protect and preserve Rockport's environment by reducing human impact. Last year, we proposed, and the voters adopted, restrictions on plastic bags, straws, and stirrers. This year, in order for Rockport to continue to reduce its environmental impact, we are proposing a more comprehensive restriction on single-use plastic foodware and water bottles. We believe that these proposals will be a great step forward for the town of Rockport. The impacts of single-use plastics, especially when improperly disposed of, are huge. It is important to understand the whole life cycle of a piece of plastic foodware, such as a plastic fork or styrofoam container. First, the plastic is synthesized by linking together hydrocarbons, which come from fossil fuels. After production, the foodware is shipped around the world. Once it is used, only once, mind you, the foodware is thrown into the trash. In Rockport, like much of Massachusetts, our, our trash is incinerated for energy. Unfortunately, when plastics are burned, they release many toxic gases, some of which can even cause cancer. As a coastal community, we shouldn't only be worried about the global impacts of single-use plastics, we need to be concerned about Rockport's environment as well. Often, plastics are not properly disposed of and can end up as litter on our streets or pollution in the ocean. In the ocean, these plastics partially break down into microplastics, which are easily ingested by marine animals and contain toxic chemicals such as BPA. This sort of pollution results in millions of fish and bird fatalities, as well as approximately 100,000 marine mammal fatalities each year, according to NOAA. Since these plastics do not biodegrade, they can be cycled through the ecosystem indefinitely. When a smaller fish consumes microplastics, any predator of that fish could fall victim as well. Since we live on the ocean and rely on it for much of our livelihoods, we have an important responsibility to work against this form of pollution. By restricting foodware to only compostable materials and by banning plastic water bottles, we can significantly reduce our impact. Unlike plastic foodware, compostable foodware is usually made of corn or other plant fibers, not oil. This means that the production of this type of foodware has a much lower impact, emitting far fewer greenhouse gases. Furthermore, even if the foodware is not composted and ends up in the trash, when it is burned, it will only release CO2 and water vapor. No toxic chemicals are released. We believe that single-use plastic foodware and water bottles are not necessary as there are affordable compostable alternatives that have a much lower impact. For example, plastic cutlery can be replaced by compostable cutlery, cutlery or reusable cutlery at nearly the same cost. Boxed water is available to replace plastic water bottles, and now, many people have their own reusable water bottles. To facilitate this transition, we have been working on installing water bottle refilling stations around town. In addition, Seaside Graphics has offered to make customized reusable water bottles for local businesses at a discounted rate. To ensure that this transition would not cause harm to Rockport's many small businesses and restaurants, interns from Seaside Sustainability went to nearly every business that uses plastic foodware or plastic water bottles, and most of the businesses that they talked to said that they believed that the timeline for this ban was reasonable and would give them time to make the switch. Lastly, we would like to say that while these bans would place Rockport as a leader in sustainability, they are not unprecedented. Many other towns and cities in Massachusetts have already banned water bottles and types of plastic foodware. Concord has had a ban on plastic water bottles for nearly 10 years, and its businesses have not experienced difficulties due to the restriction. Many towns on Cape Cod and Martha's Vineyard have passed similar bans. Nearly 30 towns in Massachusetts have passed bans on polystyrene, again, without causing noticeable harm to businesses. We thank Seaside Sustainability for its leadership in protecting and improving our world through this plastic ban. Now, it is time for each Rockport resident to act by voting to protect our beautiful town and the waters that surround it through banning single-use plastic foodware and water bottles. Please vote yes on this ban. Thank you.
Doesn't that make you feel better about the future, that there are people like this? Being educated in our town? Ah. Denise?
Thank you. Denise Donnelly, Board of Selectmen. I would like to thank the Rockport Green Team, Leslie Whalen, our health agent, the Board of Health, and Seaside Sustainability for their efforts in this regard. We are so lucky to have young people who are willing to set an example for us, that I think it's only our duty to follow their lead. And thank you very much.
Ah, yes. Oh, wait, wait, wait. We'll get you a microphone. I know that, but we'll get you one.
Just as a quick aside, I was visited today by the guidance counselor, and this seems like an appropriate forum to announce that Nathaniel Kirby, who was the previous speaker, has just been selected as a national merit semifinalist.
Wow. Anybody else? You've heard the mo, oh, yes. We'll get you a microphone.
Kathleen Cahill. I think this is very well-intentioned. I'm just wondering a couple of things. Where are these refillable water stations going to be besides the public restrooms? Probably most of Rockport does not know that there's a bubbler in Barletta Park. Nobody knows about it. It, it's never used. Does anybody else know about it? Am I the only one?
I know about it. I've used it.
Yay. I'm just wondering, you know, how are we going to do this? And I do think it's a little ironic that in this town, we are going to be able to buy Coke, fruit juices, high-fructose corn syrup, beer and wine, but you won't be able to buy water? It's a little ironic, I think. And I do think this is well-intentioned, but I've got some concerns.
Anybody else? Yes. We'll get you a microphone. It's coming, right over here. That's a very important person.
Hi. Rebecca Visnick of 3 Cleve Street. I can speak to finding alternative sources for buying water that does not come in plastic. As a marine biologist and someone who works in a necropsy lab, I have pulled plastic out of punctured esophaguses, intestines, and stomachs of our wildlife found in Massachusetts. There are countries that do not have any resources that I've visited that have Gatorade- There are countries that do not have any resources, that I've visited, that have Gatorade, Coke, Sprite, most products sold in glass bottles. So there are accessible name-brand products available in non-plastic things that countries that don't really have any resources can find, so I'm sure the smart residents of Rockport can find those materials. Brothers Brew has also just started selling water that comes in a box, which is made out of paper, which is passable in intestines. Congrats to Brothers Brew. And there's also water that's sold in glass.
Who is that person? Oh.
Yeah. So in addition to the restrooms, we are looking at putting refillable water stations in the redesigned Barletta Park and at Back Beach.
Anybody else? Yes. We'll get you a microphone. Please stand up. We'll get you a microphone.
Lori Tuck, 34 Pleasant Street. What about downtown in the Main Street area? I'm right in the center of Barletta Park and Front Beach, and I feel like a lot of the tourists who are unhappy with parking and tickets are now going to be unhappy when they can't get water to drink.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
It still will be possible to purchase boxed water, starting at brackets, and glass.
We might even sell it at Cape Anne Law. Yes.
Mercy Duffall, 267 Main Street, also co-owner of Salty's Lobster Dogs &amp; More in Dog Square. I fully propose every, every motion to support the environment, to the young lady, Wiznick, I think was your last name. I think it would be fantastic if you and your fellow proposies, perhaps of this, could submit to every resident and to every business owner, specifically food establishment, a list of all the resources of where we could buy these, because I have done some internet searching and pretty much what I saw for biodegradable water bottles is only being trialed out in Southern California, to the gentleman in the red shirt. So that would be really great, if you and Nathaniel could perhaps get those resources out to us. We'd love to take advantage of this. Thank you.
Or you could get that solid, dehydrated water. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am. We'll get you a microphone. Just stand up. We'll get you a microphone.
Penny Pilsner, 71 Eden Road. I just wanted to point out that it's not just biodegradable, but also compostable water and other containers that are going to be allowed. And that means that some, I've seen in Gloucester, it's partly plasticized, but it meets the compostable standards for water. So there is a way to sell people water and comply with this by law.
Pete Van Aken, 81 Thatcher Road. I have absolutely no problem with this. I think it's great. It's going to be a learning curve for everybody. I absolutely feel for the businesses, because it's tough for them to be able to find those things. That said, the insanity of putting my plastic trash bag inside a giant blue trash bag just to hand-deliver that to the dump, it's not like I'm putting it on the curb like the Gloucester people do with their purple Barney bags. I have to carry mine to the dump. It doesn't make sense. I mean, you guys could do a paper sticker and it would be much more acceptable. We used to have stickers, but people in Gloucester, I think, used to steal them. But, I mean, we don't have that problem, because we don't put our trash out on the street. We bring it straight to the dump. So I don't understand why it has to stop there. I mean, that's a lot more plastic than a stirrer.
Have you ever read the book Catch 22? Anybody else? Oh, way up, way up. We'll get you a microphone. Have no fear.
Thanks. Sandy Anderson, 13 Caleb's Lane. Could you clarify the motion? Because I thought Motion M was plastic bottle reduction, and I think we're voting on K?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure to understand what we're voting on.
Yeah, and I should have said that. We're talking about both of them, but when we vote, we're going to vote on them one at a time. But the subject matter is fairly, you know, similar, so we're going to talk about both of them. We'll get back to you back there.
The, I just want to say, Rockport has very good water. I just take the water out of the tap, put it in a bottle, and drink it.
We'll get you.
Alan McMillan, 18 Story Street. According to the Food and Drug Administration, the average teenager drinks 385 bottles of soda, carbonated sugared soda. If you eliminate, without, if you eliminate the plastic water bottles without eliminating anything else, you're not really improving the problem. You're going to make people go to sugary drinks, which is going to add to the obesity of Americans, one-third of which are obese. Many of you probably missed the article on the Friday, Gloucester Daily Times, on Friday, September 6th, a letter written by Steve Keim, general manager, Berkshire Springs. Two short portions of what he said. Research shows that when bottled water is not available, people will choose a less healthy packaged beverage. Because Rockport's proposed sales ban does not cover flavored and sweetened beverages or soda, teas, and juices, consumers are more likely to purchase one of these products. The problem is nearly all of the flavored and sweetened beverages are also packaged in plastic, and their plastic containers weigh, on average, 141% more than bottled water. 9.89 grams versus 23.9 grams for a 16.9 ounce container. Soft drinks and other sugary beverage containers weigh more because the plastic needs to be thickerd due to the carbonation and/or bottling processes of these products. Forcing people to consume other packaged and less healthy drinks would generate more PET plastic. Bottled water is there when it is, always there when it is needed. However, the efforts of the bottled water industry to provide crucial drinking water to citizens afflicted by natural disasters, such as what's happened down in the Bahamas and other emergency situations, are contingent on an ongoing viable commercial market. This provides bottled water companies with the infrastructure and capital resources to respond immediately when needed. The bottled water industry cannot exist only for disaster response, as some industry critics have advocated. I'm against this if it's only for bottled water. If it were for all plastic containers, I would agree with it, but you have to think realistically about this. Saying, I heard someone here say, oh, you can get water in glass bottles. Oh, yeah. Think of glass bottles, beach, broken glass, children. That's not a realistic proposal. In terms of what's going on in the ocean, yes, there's a lot of plastic, but only removing the only healthy alternative for drinks on a hot summer day is a little bit ludicrous. So I'm against this as it's written. Thank you.
Laura Evans, 77 High Street. I'm also on the ad hoc Water Committee in town, and hats off to the Green Team for putting forth this very forward-looking article. I think it's absolutely critical that we pass it and that we lead the way into the future. I walk the beaches every day and bring home a bag of plastic forks and cups and lids, and it's just, it's awful to have to do that. And I think we're seeing some of the businesses in town that are leading the way. The Fish Shack is now selling its dinners in cardboard containers. You see Brothers Brew leading the way. Shaylen Lou is selling their water in paper containers, in recyclable containers. I think the time is now, and I really herald the young folks who've put this forward and urge everyone to vote in favor of questions K and M. Thank you.
We prepare all our documents on only paper.
Arnie Epstein, 175 South Street. I moved here a couple of years ago, three years ago, from Concord, so I went through that, all of these arguments. I was opposed to the ban for the reasons I've heard, you know, soda is worse for you and people are going to drink soda, and all of these reasons, and the businesses are going to hurt because people are going to go out of town to buy water. But what actually happened is that they found ways to sell water in non-plastic bottles. So there's no chance that we're going to have a town where you can't buy water and you have to buy soda. That's just not going to happen. What's going to happen is bottled water companies are going to figure out a way to redefine the word "bottled" to include "containered" of other sorts. So I also commend the high school folks for coming up with this, and I'm in full support of it.
Susan Morris, 10 Babcock Road. I am all for this. It's the beginning. Let's vote now.
As the bylaw says, I sense you're ready to vote. If you are in favor of this article, which is Article K, so we're only doing the forks, knives, and spoons, and non-durable food service wares, so Article K only, we'll then vote separately for Article M. So Article K, if you are in favor, press 1. If you are opposed, press 2, starting now. And that motion carries. Bless you. Now we're going on to Article M.
Mr. Moderator, Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen member Denise Donnelly moves to amend the Town of Rockport Code of Bylaws, Chapter 14, Environmental Protection and Public Health, Section F, Single-Use Plastics Prohibition, and approve Article M as printed in the warrant and as set forth on Pages 46 through 48 of the Fall Town Meeting Voters booklet, and that the term "such as vincoat" be struck throughout the article. Board of Selectmen supports this article. Government and Bylaw Committee favorably reports.
Moved and seconded. We've already talked about this a lot, but if we're kind of glass-half-empty people, we can keep talking about it. All right. You've heard the motion? No? Yes. Wait for a microphone.
Claire Harper, Hybe Road. Can we modify this possibly to say plastic bottle reduction, so it includes soda? Because I know my son will reach for a soda if he can't find water. I don't know why we're not including soda bottles. They're just as bad as water bottles.
Yeah, I feel your pain, but I think that would be outside the scope of the motion because that's broadening what we would prohibit, so I'm going to rule that to be out of order. But thank you. Yeah, we can work on that for some other year if this passes. All right. Anybody else? You've heard the motion. All those in favor, press 1. Opposed, press 2. Ready? Go. And that motion passes. The chair will now entertain a motion to dissolve this meeting. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please walk out the door, and I thank you. Opposed, say no. Thank you very much.